I now call the August 14th, 2017 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. At this time Pastor Bob, would you come up and lead us in the invocation? Please stand and remain standing for the pledge.
Let's pray. Our Father, we come to you this evening so grateful for the privilege that we have to live in this country and dear Lord to live here in the town of Prescott Valley. We thank you dear God for your hand upon us and the blessings that you bring to us day by day. And Father, we pray your special blessing today upon this meeting. We thank you for the commissioners and dear Lord, we pray that you would help them as they deliberate over the issues that will be brought to them today. We pray, Father, that you will help, dear Lord, that the sense of your presence would be with us in all of our discussions and all the decisions. And Lord, most of all, we do want to pray that we might give glory and honor to you. We ask all this in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Matt Zurcher and I'm the Chairperson of the Planning and Zoning Commission and I will be presiding over the commission's deliberations on hearing items this evening. The Planning and Zoning Commission is made up solely of appointed volunteers and sits in an advisory capacity to the Town Council. The commission reviews planning and zoning issues and forwards recommendations regarding those important issues to the council. This evening's proceedings will be conducted using the following format. First, I will read the hearing application into the record. Following the identification of the hearing application, staff will present the case and the recommendations to the commission, after which questions from the Planning and Zoning Commission will be directed to staff regarding the case. After the commission initially has reviewed the application, the floor will be open for comment, at which time the applicant will have an opportunity to comment regarding the matter and answer any questions. It is at this point, I will open the floor to general comments from the public regarding the planning case before the commission. And I can't stress this enough, ladies and gentlemen, this evening we will have civility. We will be considering facts and not emotions. I ask that you direct your pertinent comments to the commission through the chairperson and not the applicant, staff, or individuals within the audience. I would also appreciate your cooperation in making your statements brief and to the point. Please do not be redundant. I'm also going to exercise my prerogative as chair to confine public comment to five-minute intervals. And if you need to speak, please, I encourage you to fill out a yellow postcard in the back, turn it into Christie, and on there you can say whether you support or do not support, or if you wish to speak or not to speak. I'm also, you are going to be limited to coming up, to speaking to us just once. No doubles. At this time, I'll have Christie call the roll call.
Commissioner Rutherford. Commissioner Reeves.
Here.
Commissioner Roberts.
Here.
Commissioner Dusky.
Here.
Commissioner Yader.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Rankin.
Here.
Chairperson Zurcher.
Here.
This time, call for motion to approve the minutes from the July 10th, 2017 meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve minutes.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on, any announcements from staff?
Just quickly, Commissioner Rutherford called me today, offered her support of the planning commission, but wanted to make sure that you knew that she's still around. She's been suffering from a significant illness and will be returning hopefully to your next meeting in September, but she passed along her best and hopes to be rejoining you in September.
All right, at this time, we will go into the public hearing items. The first public hearing item is General Plan Amendment 14-006. Upon the application of Jeff and Jessica Hall, owners, a public hearing to consider an amendment to General Plan 2025 affecting a portion of the Prescott Country Club, generally referred to as Parcel B or the Triangle Area, from the current designation of low-density residential to medium-high-density residential. Subject property comprises approximately 4.18 acres and is located between the first, eighth, and ninth fairways within the Prescott Country Club golf course.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I plan to make remarks, a general overview which includes the zoning map change for Area B, so if you'd like to read that into record as well, that's probably...
Sure, let me do that at this time. Zoning map change 14-006, upon the application of Jeff and Jessica Hall, owners, a public hearing to consider a zoning map change from R1LPAD, Single Family Residential Planned Area Development, to R2PAD, Multi-Family Residential Planned Area Development, affecting a portion of the Prescott Country Club, generally referred to as Parcel B or the Triangle Area, from the current designation of low-density residential to multiple-family residential. Subject property comprises approximately 4.18 acres and is located between the first, eighth, and ninth fairways within the Prescott Golf... Oh, excuse me, Prescott Country Club Golf Course.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just as a reminder, while you can discuss these items together, they would take separate motions on each matter. My comments today relate to the development of the country club, some of its history that is included in your packet. And then I'll conclude my remarks and introduce the agent representing this project. I believe he intends to make remarks, as do other professionals that have brought these applications to this point. Your packet contains minute materials from the Apal County Board of Supervisors in 1983, during which there were actions by the then Board of Supervisors considering multiple-family zoning within the golf course. Those actions resulted ultimately in the approval of 75 multiple-family units in the area displayed in pink on the illustration before you. That's a little over six acres. That zoning is still valid, hasn't been revoked either by Yavapai County, which would have taken a formal action, and it's been recognized by the town of Prescott Valley as part of our annexation of the properties. I've explained to the commission in the past, yep, the town of Prescott Valley has to seek the closest analogous use district when annexing properties into the town of Prescott Valley, so they are not more restrictive or less restrictive, if at all possible, when those actions are taken. Likewise, the remainder of the country club is zoned R1LPAD. That zoning district has applied throughout the remainder of the country club. You're familiar with the clubhouse area, having done field visits. Those properties are zoned commercially and there is an area both zoned multiple-family as well as an area zoned multiple-family that has developed with townhomes. Many of those uses are illustrated here. The first applications that came to the town of Prescott Valley related to then Parcels A, B, and C, the area previously known as Area A is immediately across from and west of the existing clubhouse facility. That area has been removed from the application. First applications brought to the town in 2014 identified 110 units over those three parcels. What's being proposed now is a general plan amendment for Area B, which would, as you've described, allow multiple-family zoning, and then a lessening of the intensity or density in Parcel C off of Cottonwood Cove to reduce the number of units and reduce the footprint of the proposed site plan. This is the Area B designated in the town's general plan at low-density residential. This is an overview of what I've described previously and is in your packet showing both the Triangle Area with a rough depiction of multiple-family uses, as well as the area in Cottonwood Cove, and then the preceding area in the center of the slide, which is no longer part of the application. This is a better scale of the area in Parcel B, proposed for the general plan amendment as well as subject of a preliminary development plan and zoning map change as part of your application. This shows Parcel C or the Cottonwood Cove area now as proposed, smaller than originally approved by Yavapai County. Conceptual elevations have been provided and are illustrated here. And I've gone through the slides. I'm going to back up and Mr. Burgoye may want to make remarks using these slides. The applications that came to the staff and now are presented to you have evolved over the last several years. That evolution has included responding to remarks from reviewing agencies, all the way from ADOT to Yavapai County, both as related to traffic analysis, as well as drainage concerns and so forth. Those things have been addressed by professional consultants and those materials are available in the public record. Those have been prepared either by a traffic engineer, I believe there's one here wanting to speak to you tonight, or registered professional civil engineers, or in the case of the drainage improvements by the Yavapai County Flood Control District. A lot of the drainage that comes from surrounding properties has been permitted over time to find its way to the golf course and then from the golf course to Clipper Wash where it wants to go. The Flood Control District has worked with the property owner to accomplish some regional drainage improvements across the golf course, and that's also subject to public information. I'm aware of at least three separate neighborhood meetings that occurred either in this facility or upstairs. I believe there was also one that was held on-site, the first one at the country club itself. Those meetings have been well-attended and I'm sure some people that are here tonight also attended those meetings. The commission's been made aware of those meetings, though this is the first time that it has been formally considered meeting the zoning map change and general plan amendment by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The other items on your agenda regard a preliminary development plan for Area B, so if you recommend a zoning map change, the commission as part of the town's code considers formally a preliminary development plan. And likewise on Parcel C, as an action item, it would be your consideration of a preliminary development plan within the existing R2PAD. With that, I've intended to make only general opening remarks. I'm prepared to go into considerable detail regarding some of the materials that you've received over time, the status of the applications, and I will do so, Mr. Chairman, at your direction, either to try to address comments that you receive from the public or the applicant. With that, I'd conclude and respond to any questions you may have.
Do any commissioners have any questions of staff?
No. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to reserve my option to question after we have heard questions and answers.
Sure. At this time, I'd like to invite the applicant up. State your name for the record, please.
I will. Peter Burgoye, I'm the planner and landscape architect working on the project for the applicant. Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, Richard did a great job summarizing the highlights and the pertinent general character of the proposal. I think an important thing to point out is that, I'll try to get into some of the details. I don't want to overlap too much, try to make it brief because I know there are folks that you'll have questions, or folks in the audience that want to speak and have questions. As Richard pointed out, about almost 35 years ago, the county designated Area C or Parcel C for 75 homes. Since that time, about three years ago, the halls made an application, made an application to take those homes and distribute them among three areas, A, B, and C. At that time, the application was, I believe, 110 homes. Consequent or subsequent to that, the number of parcels was reduced to two parcels, Areas B and C that you have on the map, and Area A was eliminated from that proposal, and the number of homes dropped back down to 75 homes. The goal at that time was to disperse the homes so that they all weren't concentrated down in what's been referred to as Cottonwood Cove. We refer to it as a Clipper Town Home, it's down by Clipper Wash, to reduce the number that are in that area and disperse it to the two areas, B and C. So 35, and the proposal being that there would be 35 homes in Area C and 40 homes, townhomes in Area B. So it was to spread things out a little bit and not have them all down in Cottonwood Cove or down by Clipper Wash. And as Richard mentioned, there were several follow-up pieces of information provided, either as a result of questions raised by the town or questions raised by neighbors or by the county or by the state, and that included traffic study as well as an addendum to the traffic study and follow-up letters and answers to questions. Before I go any further, I want to introduce Paul Guzic from Lee Engineering, right behind me here. Lee Engineering's a highly qualified, well-respected firm out of Phoenix, and they also have offices in other parts of the Southwest, but Paul's company did the traffic study, so he's here to answer any questions regarding traffic. The other, another piece of information that was provided was a drainage study, and that was prepared by Lyon Engineering from Prescott. They've done engineering, civil engineering and drainage work in the Quad City areas for several decades. The other things that were added or follow-up information that was provided, there were comments provided from CYFD on emergency access and the ability to serve the parcels and the developments, and certain conditions were listed by CYFD to make sure that they could provide the services necessary. There's also a general reduction in building height, so that the allowable building height of 35 feet, which is town code, we're going to bring that down so that the homes could become, would become two-story homes as opposed to having to do three-story homes, as probably three-story homes as they would be developed if they were all developed in Area C, so we're able to bring them down in height and make them fit the complexion of the golf course community. As Richard mentioned, there were several neighbors' meetings. I wasn't in all those neighbors' meetings. I have been in the past two, so I've got a pretty good read of what the questions were asked in the past two meetings and certainly a lot of the concerns that were brought up. One general comment, maybe it's not so general, but the halls have strived to make this project, like I said, distributing the numbers of units between two areas and not one, so that it fits the complexion and character of golf course community. The height of the homes have been brought down, the materials and the colors that will be used for the homes will be similar, if not identical, to the homes around it. One of the beauties of golf course community is you've got a backyard, a big backyard right out your back doorstep. You've got a fairway or a tee or a green or green space associated with the golf course, and that's the intent to keep, that that asset or that value and that visual character that you have is going to still be there. Will the view stay the same for most of the, for most of the country club? Yes, it will. But for anybody on the golf course or anyone golfing, the view will change a little bit. There'll be some more homes on the golf course or along the fairways. But the golf course will stay intact as it is, pretty much the way it is today. There may be some minor adjustments that have to be made. A couple of things, and can I scroll through these, Richard, just by, or Vic? Okay. I won't spend too much time on this, but this is an overall view of the golf course, and I realize it's probably hard to see all the details, but the two areas we're talking about, here's Area B that you saw in the previous slide, which we're calling Fairway Village and the 40 townhomes, and Area C, which is down by Clipper Wash and the Clipper Village here, in 35 homes. There's some lines that you see going through here, these blue lines, which are some of the recent flood improvements, flood improvements that the county made to deal with some of the water that was coming across and onto the golf course, and it was, the goal was to direct it to areas that could handle it. So they're shown here for, really for more for reference purpose than anything else. The access into the Fairway Village townhomes is off of Blaina Vista here, and it comes, this access drive of about 600 feet, coming over to Area Parcel B here. Clipper Village, the access is off of Cottonwood Spring here. As we get a little bit closer, the area for Parcel B or Fairway Village is here. You can see the connection access drive here over to Blaina Vista. And the homes are arranged around a kind of a central area here. You can come in and drive around, and there's parking off of those areas, the homes themselves. I'll show you the concept sketch here in a second, give you an idea of what the outward appearance will be of the homes. You can see the homes are arranged along the fairways. Fairways may change a little bit, but for the most part, they'll be able to stay intact. Give you some idea of distances on the north side here from the property line at Fairway Village over to the property lines here by the residences, around 200 feet, somewhere in there. Here to the west, it's about 400 feet on that side. To the east, if we go out this way, it's about 600 feet. And then to the south, it goes down to the clubhouse and that area, so it's really, really no homes down here close by. That Area A that Richard talked about is in here, and that will be, and is determined by the drainage study, will handle the water that comes off of B through a series or through a system that's surface and subsurface drainage. As we go down to Clipper Wash and Clipper Village here, the townhomes are again arranged around a central, I'll call it courtyard area with frontage on the golf course, except for these that have frontage on Clipper Wash. The access again is off of Cottonwood Spring here. There's white lines that you see here, drainage improvements as part of the flood control work that was, or flood improvement work that was gone, that has gone on. Drainage for Cottonwood Village will go into Clipper Wash, and as part of the drainage study, it was determined that Clipper Wash could handle that. As part of the drainage study, the two-year, 10-year, 25, and 100-year pre and post-development flows were studied to see if those areas, both Clipper Wash as well as that Area A could handle that runoff. And then finally, going down to the elevations that show, this is the view from the golf course or from the back of the homes. Again, the colors, the height is consistent with the homes that are around the golf course. The materials, the colors, the textures will all keep in that same style, those same styles. The dash line, looks like I got a little bit bent here on the translation into the slide, but the dash line that you see here is essentially the 35-foot height line or the maximum height allowed by town code. Like I said earlier, we were able to bring that height down to a two-story profile. The black and white version that you see here shows a garage access on the courtyard side and then the entrance side for the doorways and the entryway, main entryway into the homes. And if there are any, I'll stop there. Any questions the commission might have?
Questions?
I do not.
Okay. Continue.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does the commission have any questions of the applicant at all?
Sir, you are the planner for this development? Is that what you said?
Yes, yes.
Just a couple of questions. In the Area C, I know the area's been reduced considerably. What is the planned use or the current status of the area that was, I'll use the term, cut out of Area C? Was it simply a matter of it wasn't necessary to do what they're proposing?
It's a couple of things. One is that since the density, as you pointed out, the density's been reduced down there to 35 homes, then you're correct, there's not as much area required to do those 35 homes. The pink area that Mr. Parker was talking about earlier that goes up to the, kind of to the northeast there, goes into where the driving range is, the practice range. So scaling it back to the area that you see in the red line on the plan, we can put the units in there, have them fit in that area, and still preserve the practice area of the golf course. So there are really two components, the density of the units and preserving the practice range.
But that area would still be available for future development as C2?
No. If approved, as you see it here, then that area will stay as the practice range.
Okay. The other question is, Area B in December of 13 was agreed to be open space by both the county and town planners. When it was annexed into the city, it was annexed in utilizing the best available zoning, which is R1L, which can also be in an open space environment. What is your position on that and why do you think that that open space consideration does not still apply?
Well, again, as I mentioned, kind of towards the end of my presentation, the goal was to reduce that concentration in C and still implement the 75 homes and make them fit the context and character of the golf course. One of the concerns is if we put everything down in C or the pink area that we were talking about just a moment ago, is that the concentration of the homes would, it would be concentrated down there. The height of the homes would probably be three-story buildings for the condominiums. Dispersing them up to B or utilizing that Area B, again, just fits within the context of the golf course. The shift from not using Area A, the site that is, it's not outlined on that plan there, but that Area A where the, it's referred to as the old golf course pond or lake, that area is still open. It's not being utilized, and Area B will be utilized for those 40 homes, and again, to disperse that density.
I don't know if my question was answered, sir. What right do you think that the developer has...
Please, no clapping.
...to utilize that space that is designated as open space coming into the annexation?
Well, again, it's a change in the application, or it's an application to... to utilize that space today. And again, looking at the densities and trying to distribute them, that's, that's the reason for the change, so.
Okay, so the request today is the ability to override that, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. The, I think that's the only questions I have at this point, sir, but I thank you for your answers.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
No.
Would the owners like to make a comment? Okay. The commission will, will probably more than likely call you up after the public has spoken to answer any questions they may have. Before we open it up, any other questions of staff? All right. So at this time, we will open the floor to public comment. Please keep in mind, we will be limiting public comment to five minutes. You will be timed. When we say time's up, please conclude your remarks briefly and then have a seat. Then, with that, again, no clapping, please. Also, please turn off your cellphones or silence them or just make them vibe, unvibrate. That's just for, no, decorum. All right, at this time, we'll get started. Larry, Vice Chair Rankin, will be calling you up.
First, I, four of the cards that I got, that we got, don't say whether they'd like to speak or not speak, so I'd just like to quick, there's four of them. Ken Jeffries, do you want to speak?
No.
Joan Eg- Eg-
Erin.
Thank you. Do you want to speak?
There may be two filled out for her, because I think I just turned it on with her name.
Okay. Sandra Downs, you want to speak? And Susan Bashford? I hope I, Bafford? All right. Okay, so I'm going to call you up, maybe not in the sequence that you'd like to, but in the sequence that I got the cards. So the first person to speak is Leonard Danbeck. Is he here?
We originally bought a-
Speak into the microphone, please.
Yes.
What?
Please speak into the microphone.
Okay.
You can adjust it if need be, sir.
Okay. We originally built a home on Mojave Trail in the Prescott Country Club.
We can barely hear you, sir. You got to speak into the microphone.
I said, we originally bought our, bought a lot and built a home on Mojave Trail. And then we saw this lot on Manzanita Trail, and we liked the view of the golf course, and we paid a premium for this lot. And now we see that there's, what they want to do, the traffic is terrible on Manzanita to begin with. Now, you take Old Black Canyon Highway, we get the traffic from there, and they are still building up there. There's still lots available, and that is only going to increase our traffic. And I don't know why the halls don't build on Tapatio where they have property available to already build on, and this is only going to decrease the value of our property. And it's very upsetting.
Excuse me, on reading penmanship, the last name is Thompson, the first name is NAU?
Nan.
All right. I apologize for not being able to read your pen.
My name is Nan Thompson, and I bought-
Please speak into the microphone.
Okay, and I bought in the country club in 1991. I personally do not wish this, this proposal to go through because two things. I live on Buena Vista, which is called the island, and the island with all the density, the traffic that'll be coming in, it will just disrupt our way of life tenfold. Also, I would like to read a letter from Debbie Faust. She has been ill and can't make it to the meeting tonight.
For the record, we all received a letter from her. It does not need to be read into the record. It's, it's the copy of which has been submitted for the record.
I think this is, her daughter is here, I think this is different.
Different letter. I would rather have you read it then, or?
I have a vote, please.
Okay, then.
Go ahead.
Dear Planning Commissioners, I can't be with you at tonight's meeting due to health issues. I hope you will take my opposition to the Hall's plans into consideration when making your determination in this application. I am speaking to you as a certified real estate appraiser, practicing in Arizona for many years. Before I bought my own home in Prescott Country Club 10 years ago, I did due diligence and researched all of the surrounding properties. The golf course directly behind my house has been in existence for over 35 years at that time. The county had designated the triangle area known as Parcel B to remain as golf course open space. Historically, golf course lots in Prescott Country Club have sold for much higher prices than typical lots, usually at least twice as much depending on the lot size. In Quailwood, the current premium payment for a golf course lot is $50,000. That is the top of the underlying cost of a typical lot. The average golf course lot in Quailwood is very small in comparison to the average lot size in the PCC. If Parcel B is rezoned for multiple family units, I estimate my immediately lost in land value alone would be $50,000 or more. When you factor in the other negative influences that multifamily development would bring, such as increased traffic and noise, parking, lighting, and new roadways, I believe my loss in home value would exceed $100,000. There are a great many other property owners like myself that would suffer tremendous losses. The halls would tell you that they are entitled to build up to 75 units based on a 35-year-old rezoning of Parcel C in 1983. What the halls won't tell you is that Parcel C was over 6.5 acres back then, and there were very few density homes in that area. Parcel C is less than 4.5 acres in size now, and the density of the homes nearby have increased more than threefold. The 1983 rezoning, what they are relying upon, came with very clear stipulations for one-story units alone that require improvements to address the roadways and flooding. If you have driven on the tiny dead-end streets of Cottonwood Springs, you know that it is not even possible for two cars to pass each other if there are cars parked along the street. There are many particular reasons why Parcel C was never developed by the four prior owners of the golf course within the last three decades. Halls will also fail to mention that they are not entitled to develop anything in Parcel B, and they never were. To tell you anything different is simply false. Throughout my career, I've worked on many legal cases involving rezoning actions in Maricopa County. I can honestly say that I have never witnessed anything quite like the Hall's proposals that are before you now. Some of the primary reasons that zoning code exists are to protect the rights of all property owners, protect property values, and preserve the character of the neighborhood. A rezoning action should not be detrimental to the surrounding properties and contrary to the-
Time.
-general welfare of several million dollars' worth of property. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am, excuse me, excuse me. I'm Barry Dunlap, and this was a repla-, well, a revision-
Sir, you need to speak into the-
-of a proposal plat that the halls had. And this was presented at the June meeting. I could not attend that meeting because I had appointment in Phoenix. And you have copies, I think all of you, of this particular plat. And what we had done, we had took the PDF that shows the proposed buildings in Parcel B, and then we put those parcel, those buildings on the lots that the halls own on Tapadero. Jeff had said at the time, so I heard, that he had-
Please speak into the microphone, sir.
He was asked to, is he supposed to tear his house down? And of course not. The idea of this, to show this, is they could have built a multifamily on those lots that are already zoned that way. And the question is, I have to ask, well, why not, why not do that? Instead, he built a home on two multifamily lots that could have been profit, and you can't build on that anymore. And so while he claimed to have an income problem or that the golf business is declining, so they need extra income, they surely could have built those units there and, and made the money and put his home in the middle of Parcel B. Now, I had some other questions to ask that were, I don't think were ever addressed, and that had to do with golf safety when, talked to, brought that up at the April meeting. I said, how come we don't have screening around all these buildings on Parcel B? I mean, they're right up against a golf fairway, and it, what, 25 feet back from the fairway? And some might say, well, we don't need that, we don't need the screening. But you look at Jeff's house, and he put up a 25-foot-high screen. We live right across from that on the north side of eight, I'm at least 50 feet, 60 feet off the fairway. And we had a golf ball that was driven through a shed of ours under, under a deck, and it went in one wall and out the other. The flight of that ball leaving number eight could not have exceeded 20 feet in height. And if you Google the speed of a golf ball from a drive, an average male will, will hit the ball at 150 miles an hour off the tee. That ball had to be, had to be closer than 200 miles an hour to punch two holes through a shed. Now, there is a safety problem, and if you guys want to approve this, this thing here, and I'm amazed that a golfer would, would say-
Please speak into the microphone, sir, and direct your comments to the chair.
I'm, I'm sorry. You, you should consider the safety of the people. If somebody's going to walk out that door on the miles they're not shown up there, the back door onto the fairway, you better have a hard hat. And I, from where I sit, I watch people all over inside that triangle, which can be said to be nothing but a shooting gallery. Now, we don't want to see the halls have, have a problem, fail at this golf course, but as I said, they could have made money, since it's, especially since the sores are working in Tapadero, they, they could have built on Tapadero and brought in quite a bit of income. And so, you know, I have a question about that. And the other thing, question that I brought up at the meeting was the traffic bottleneck. There was a lot of talk about traffic count, but when you put all those roads together down here on Buena Vista East, Manzanita Trail, and where the roadway would go into the proposed Parcel B, you have an accident down in there, you get a fire in there, and what do you go, who's going to be responsible for the liability if, if you can't get access in there? And I think one of the residents had pictures of a recent situation where somebody else went into the ditch on Manzanita, and there were four sheriff's deputies, two fire units, and an ambulance showed up. And we've got some problems in there, and there's other ways of solving this problem of, of the golf course management. And I think a good community development, development department-
Time.
-should be assisting, should be assisting the, the halls in their business.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunlap. Next person is Susan Brack.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Susan Brack. I've lived in the country club for over 10 years. My concern about this project is, I've seen so many changes. It was kind of laughable that we moved into the Prescott Country Club thinking it was Prescott and finding out our address was Dewey. And now I live on Cottonwood Springs Drive, which is one of the main streets that everybody's talking about. It's a dead-end street. It leads into the maintenance yard. It, my, my house faces the wash. I see cars going up and down that street every day. I am nervous that just one car goes down, but to have two lanes down that, I picture cars in the wash. There's no homes built. There's no safety rails. That street is not meant for two lanes. I had a recent occurrence where I expected, I paid the homeowners association, I expect certain privileges from that. They came into the country club, like they have done many years, to surface the blacktop. They fill in the potholes, they cover the, the cracks. And because Prescott Valley has annexed my property, there, or the country club property, I go down my driveway. I own my house, I own my driveway, but when my car leaves my driveway, I am in Prescott Valley. I am no longer in Dewey. So when they came to blacktop this year, they stopped three houses down from my street and said, and I called the office and said, well, are they not finishing the street, which they have done in the past? And they said, oh, no, that is now Prescott Valley, and we will be, not be repairing your asphalt. You can call Prescott Valley. So my concern is, I live in a country club where half the streets are Prescott Valley, half the streets are Dewey. I've asked the question before, is Parcel B going to be Prescott Valley? I think the answer was yes. I just have other concerns about what upkeep and the value of my house is going to happen when I don't know from street to street if it's Dewey or if it's Prescott Valley. So I'm concerned, like the other people, of the value of my home. And I'm very, very concerned about the safety of Cottonwood Springs having all that traffic. And I also have seen the traffic increase. I know we have a traffic expert here. I don't know what he's going to say, but I can tell you, since they put in Maverick, we have seen so much more traffic, and I can't even imagine if they build all these, all these homes, what the traffic's going to be like in the country club. Thank you.
Thank you.
Some of what I have to say is background that you all have, and it may be a little bit redundant, but I would like to repeat it here, and I have a question.
Please do not be redundant.
My question, my, first of all, in 1983, that triangle B was approved as open space. We've all agreed to that. We all agreed that in 2014, in January of 2014, Yabapai County Development Services confirmed the zoning from- confirmed the zoning from 1983, and, and the town of Prescott Valley accepted said zoning during the annexation in February of 2014. That zoning was open space. The notice regarding this public meeting, and what you have all said tonight, is it's now zoned for low-density, how, single-family, or low-density residents, because it is in the area of the Country Club. I guess my question is, how can you automatically change zoning from open space to low-density residential without the citizens who live in Prescott Country Club, the residents, without having any say-so about it?
We'll have your question answered by staff after the public hearing is concluded.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to answer that now?
The speaker asks a couple of questions. One, she refers to low-density residential. That's a designation as part of the town's general plan 2025. The zoning of the property when it came into the town of Prescott Valley was R1LPAD. It was not zoned open space. It was zoned R1LPAD. So that's the basis that the map shows, R1LPAD, and that's the basis of staff's opinion that was agreed to or confirmed by the Development Services Director when we provided that information to it. But the underlying zoning of parcel B is R1LPAD.
Thank you. Next speaker is Bob Darnell.
My name's Bob Darnell. I live at 11427 Manzanita Trail. I don't know if you can see it, but up there where it says parcel B, fairway, townhouse is a pie shape. That's my house. I've got some concerns I wrote down on April of 2017. And one was, is the traffic study approved and signed? I asked Tom tonight, and he said, yes, it was. My concern along with traffic is, in that curve around my house, I have a circular driveway, has four pylons on each side, two pylon on each side, and they've been knocked down five times since I've owned the house. Two people have driven in the ditch, two across the street in the ditch. Now, in the traffic study, they say there's 600, 806 more daily trips. If I go to the mailbox, or I'm weeding or something along the road, I have a good possibility of getting hit. Secondly, the, the traffic was submitted here a while back. An alternate trip is taking from Area C here through this access road up into Prescott Boulevard. It takes out all the traffic around the Country Club. And Mr. Ryan Jasper, who was the Public Works Director, had written a letter saying that they needed to check that out more, because the county was dissatisfied with the comments of the owner saying, at a blanket statement, it would affect the Country Club. And that's all within control of the Country Club itself. And the only problem we'd have is that 69 and Maverick, and Old Chisholm, and Country Club Boulevard, that's not going to go away. But if they did that, you'd lose all of the turquoise and Manzanita traffic. Secondly, flood control study. He said that's signed as well. But one thing, on Area B, where they want to drain it into A, which is the pond, along the straight, that straight side, it's pretty level, and its altitude is 4750, and on the far side, it's 4720. All the water drains, I'd say 99% drains in the opposite direction of Area A. He said they have a plan or something. If you put a pipe or something under B, which is about 30 feet, Area A's deepest point is 4718. So I don't understand the logic of draining that into a pond at almost the same level. That has not been addressed. And oh, by the way, the line engineering study expired on June 30th this year. Sewer, has the sewer been completed and accepted by Prescott Valley? Can anyone here answer that?
Yes.
Okay. Has anyone looked at how the sewer's going to get from C into the connection?
Not a question.
Because it's real low, and you're going to go uphill, and you know that stuff doesn't Okay, excavation, there's a 30-foot drop, there's no, in the diagrams of the building, there's no split levels or anything of that nature. A lot of that's going on, no one's talked about it. And I think that's about all I've got.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Martha Duncan.
Thank you for the opportunity, Chairman, and members of the planning and zoning. Some of the, I'll try to be brief about this, some of the things that I've heard other residents say, and hopefully, just in my notes, I can remember some of the things that have been previously asked. One question is, that was asked in the April meeting, was how many cars travel Manzanita? I think the traffic study said something like 42 or 4,700 cars a day. I know in the area that Mr. Darnell, Debbie Fouts, Barry Dunlap, I know that area, and the traffic in the morning, notwithstanding when school buses are there, it's from 6:30 in the morning till 8:30 a.m., it's one car every three seconds that passes their house. So that was a question that was asked back in April, and it wasn't answered. I'm with Melody and some of those people that went back and looked at the issues in 1983, when the county approved some of those things along the line. One of the things was, that I think's always been overlooked, is the fact that that was designated open space. And I know generally now, Quailwood and Stone Ridge, the overall designation within the golf course is R1L, was just residential. It includes a blanket coverage. It does not mean that parcel A was extracted, or, excuse me, was included in that. It was R1L back when the county approved that. And for them to say now that it has R1L zoning, it didn't. It still is designated as open space. The other thing that they keep bringing up from the back is the pond down there, which is parcel A. I have the documents here today, I'm sure that you have seen them. Parcel A was designated, the 1983 and 1986, it was designated, or it was put in by the families in a perpetuity document, that it would not be developed, and it was designated until the last living, breathing relative of Ronald Reagan had been dead for 21 years, parcel A. So the developer and his engineer keep saying, we've excluded that, and we might still do something with that, but that won't ever be developed. What I see on that will be the same thing that's happened around the Maverick, and I believe in the town of Prescott Valley in 2006 or 2008, the environmental studies required that the buildings, the rooftops, all the parking lot, all of those things needed to go to water retention ponds. And if you take a look around, like the Maverick, the massive amount of water retention ponds, that's what I see parcel A. It'll be dug out, it'll be filled with rocks, and it'll be a water retention pond. They'll, however the different elevations will be, they'll have to drain it there, because they won't be able to drain it through the fairway of number nine. So that's just one of the issues that people have spoke about, and that I wanted to bring up. The other thing is, I worked for a lot of developers over 20 years. One of the main things that we always looked for when we were looking for a parcel in the zoning was, in accordance with Article II, Sections 1 and 2, the Constitution of Arizona, the legislative body of a municipality shall consider the individual property rights and personal liabilities of the residents of that municipality before approving a zoning ordinance. And that's one thing that I always had thought and learned through working with some of developers. Number one, that there's a need for zoning. You have to have and prove a need when you go before a zoning council. And as far as the need, as discussed with other people here, the lots on Tapodaro, there's a lot of vacant lots. Tim Hendrickson's here, he's owned those lots, he's Jessica's father. They've had them for sale for five or six years, they've owned them for 10 years. If there was such a need to build multifamily residential or condominiums, townhomes, there's some on that street, they're close to the swimming pool and all the facilities, let them build there, all of you. Take that into consideration. And once they've built there, and they've filled them up, and they've used them, then let them come back to the town and ask to do something with the area that absolutely will decimate the views and the property values of the people along Manzanita and along Buena Vista and in that area. Let's see, proof that there's need, there is no need. Most importantly, when we came before you and the town council, we had over 1,000 petitions. There's now 600 in there that they just started. I provided pictures for them. There's a map, can I just walk and show you this map?
This is from the petitions in
Yeah, you have to use the microphone.
I'll show you this, then I'll go back to the microphone.
Yeah, in time, so, thank you.
Okay, this is the petitions. This is the number of people that have signed in the areas. Every area in the Country Club feels that they have been harmed by this, and I hope you take that into consideration, and I appreciate the courtesy, sir.
Next speaker, excuse me, is John Bliss.
Good evening. I'm John Bliss. I live on 1195 Buena Vista East. That's just off the second fairway. I'm 100% against the rezoning of parcel B for the following reasons: destruction of the golf course, loss of views, privacy, reduction of home values, increased traffic. It's my belief that this is a flawed plan, and to sell multifamily units on parcel B is a mistake. Any investor willing to purchase those properties would be someone who hasn't seen the property or understands the circumstances by which they'd be building. I guess at the end of the day, golfers, golf carts, golf balls, cars, school buses, children in a confined area like this is a, is a cause for disaster. So I urge the Planning and Zoning Board to deny the zoning change. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, John. Dennis Jennings.
I live on Oxbow Drive. Been here, newcomer to the area, I've only been here nine years. I'd like to speak for myself, the estate of my wife, Kathleen Carey. We have three properties here, the house on Oxbow, and another one located in Tapodaro, and one on Cottonwood Springs.
Sir, can you speak into the microphone a little bit better, please?
What's that?
A little closer to the microphone, please.
Adjust it so it's in front of you.
By its very nature of the fairways, the golf, all three properties are adversely accepted by the proposed development of the golf, golf course. By its very nature, the fairways of the golf course and the general character of multifamily residency is a major conflict of interest concerning the safety of the homes and residents. We have already seen the partial erection of a 30-foot-high fence in violation of fencing covenants that others must adhere to, became necessary for the protection of the recently completed home office. I've recently had to replace a storm door on the Tapodaro property due to a golf ball that had more energy than aim. By its very nature, multifamily units are targeted to low-income tenants. Combination of sheer ugliness, a group of multifamily units surrounded by high-protective fences, a guarantee, a substantial portion of the profit derived from creating this error in taste and judgment will come out of my pocket and the pocket of every other property owner in the Prescott Country Club. Throughout the evolution of these proposed developments, we've been plagued by deceit and near deceit. From the replat to absorb the Tapodaro wastewater system, which very, very gently forgot to mention that the golf course was included in that replat, it may have been obvious to somebody within the bureaucracy, but it overshot me, and I'm a land surveyor with 30 or 35 years of experience. What we, what we got was basically a grand gerrymander in the addition of the golf course, which I admit, I supported it in my ignorance. I had no idea what, someplace between garbage and appendages were going to be tied onto the replat with apparently rezoning, rescheduling, and everything else that was completely concealed from the public. The idea that the approved properties in Area C could be transferred over to Area B, which is, other people pointed out, was expressly prohibited. We have also questioned the traffic studies and the constant absence of access suitable for emergency vehicles. Because of the constant deceit, the developers of the proposed changes, and all, and all through casual acceptance by the staff and city planners, those of us who have been observers or participants to the process, develop a sincere and well-documented reason to distrust the process. With my own background of over 50 years of experience as a land surveyor and a subdivision designer, and dealing regularly with development issues, I perceive that a greater plan or scheme exists that involves the closing of the golf course, a complete development of the entirety of the golf fairways, and to multifamily low-income housing. If the proposed development plan is allowed to go ahead, it will, by its sheer ugliness, make the golf course and Country Club into a financially failing enterprise, thus opening the door to the above-mentioned travesty. They would, in addition to taking the developers' profits out of the existing homeowners' pockets, both by pulling real estate values and by paying taxes to subsidize low-income housing, which would destroy the character of the best-designed subdivision that I have ever seen, including every subdivision that I ever made. This is a beautiful sub, I got to say it. The very best I have ever seen. And it's constant drive to create more housing in the four valleys, that quality of life is promoted, while every effort is made to degrade the same quality of life by the development interests. Let's hope that we can do a little bit to slow down the root hog or die, or devil-take-the-hindmost mentality that is attended to those efforts. I've outlined above
I'm, sir.
...how they might attempt to proceed. This must be stopped. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dennis. Joan Ignatoff, did I get it right that time?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
My name is Joan Ignatoff. My main concerns for the development are traffic and My main concerns for the development are traffic, and since I live at the bottom of Manzanita, you can't go home or go anywhere without going in front of my house unless you live on the other side of the country club. So I understand how much traffic is there already. Another concern is flooding. I know they did some reworking of the area, but any time you start moving dirt and changing elevations, you change water flow, and since I'm at the bottom of the hill, I can guarantee you water doesn't go uphill, it goes downhill, and it ends up in the ditch next to my house. And it doesn't always keep up with that water flow, it comes into our garage, and that's four times. So any construction up above us is going to affect what comes into that ditch. I know a comment was made at the last meeting that the Maverick doesn't have anything to do with the country club, but I beg to differ. Sometimes when you pull up to the stop sign at PCC Boulevard and Manzanita, you're getting in line right there just to get up to the light. So if you're an ambulance or you're a fire truck, there's no shoulder, there's no hope of getting in. So if I need an ambulance, I'm going to be concerned that they can't get to me. That's a big concern. And the picture of the proposed condos that are claimed that they're going to fit in, I don't or haven't driven around every single home that faces the golf course, but I don't remember seeing condos built along the golf course. I remember seeing single-family residences. So to say that this fits in, I don't think so. It doesn't fit in. It's not where I intended to buy in 2004. If I wanted to live in something that had multifamily housing, I would have, I had the opportunity to do that. But I chose the country club because it was a nice contained community, there wasn't a lot of commercial buildings there. That's not what the country club's all about. And we're not even, Jessica referred to us one time as, she's Prescott Valley, or she's Prescott Country Club, we're not. But then what are we? I would prefer that it stay like it is. I don't think it's going to improve the value of property. I don't think it's going to do us any good whatsoever to have these dumped onto the golf course. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Shirley Marota. Marata, thank you for correcting me.
My name is Shirley Marata, and I live on Manzanita Trail, right in front of Tapodaro.
Bring the microphone just a bit.
And this very much will affect us. It'll affect my property, it'll affect the value, it's going to affect the water that comes down to us. As it is, we get so much water that, like Mrs. Eganov, we get flooded. My property hasn't been flooded because we have a good ditch that the water made by itself. We had to line it. If anything happens, the county will not take care of that front part of my ditch because it's my property. So this is not only going, the traffic is not only going to affect us, we have a bus stop there, we have traffic, we're going to have water, because all that water that they block, the poorest part of that golf club, is going to come down to us. I get, we get the water from both sides of Manzanita, we get the water from Tapodaro, and anything that runs off the golf course. I'm very concerned about this, and I'm hoping that the zoning never goes through, that doesn't change, because our property values will go down. And another thing, last week, there was an article in our little newsletter, and it said the weeds were growing all over the place, and Mrs. Hall stated that they're letting the weeds grow long. And to remind the residents that they are not under the jurisdiction of the country club, so they don't have to obey our laws. So if they put this in here, and there's problem with those condominiums and stuff like that, did they have to obey the country club laws? I don't think so. I don't think so at all. And I think this zoning would be so wrong for this community. And I think we're endangering everybody that lives on those roads that come through the country club. We only have two exits out of there. So I would appreciate that you keep in mind what might be happening here. It's not the dollar that counts, it's our safety and our special community. Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley. Last speaker is Sandra Downs. Did I get that right?
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Sandra Downs, and I live at the Prescott Country Club, and I live on Manzanita. And I've heard said what I want to say, but, and I'll try not to be emotional about it because you informed us not to be emotional, and I do thank you for the opportunity to speak, but I sometimes wonder what would happen if the shoe was on the other foot, you know? I get kind of emotional about where I live, my home, and my neighbors, and my streets, and obeying the laws with the weeds and so on, which Prescott Valley owns behind me, the county owns in front, you know, lives in, owns the road in front of me. And it's a two-lane narrow road for anybody that hasn't been down it. Now, I don't know, where'd that white-haired guy go from Prescott? He said that, that the professionals, he kept, I don't know if you noticed, but four times he said, professionals came up with these statistics. Well, I asked a couple of those professionals about the traffic, if they had ever been down Manzanita. Nope, they haven't been in the country club. We've got a narrow, two-lane road with very deep ditches, deep ditches, there's no place to park. When we have our garage sales, it's a mess for the sheriff's department. I also asked him, I was the one that asked about the Maverick traffic, you know, and they put four new pumps in there. I think they're making over $100,000 a day over there. That's a lot of taxes for Prescott Valley. And I just, I feel so sad about the, I'm going to say it, I feel sad about the greed that I feel is involved in here. But they informed me that they weren't, there was a silence, and then someone said, "We're not responsible for Maverick's traffic." Well, who is? If you're going to build in a place, doesn't Maverick traffic affect the rest of the country club, even though they're not us? When you bottleneck out of that country club, and everybody goes by my house too, when you bottleneck and come out of the country club, we are at a stop sign right there on 69 and Fane Road. Let me tell you, I've already, without these things being built, I've waited for three lights to get out of there. And people pull out of Maverick like they think they can. Anyway, I hope that I haven't wasted my breath. It's really hard for me to talk in front of a group of people, and especially about something that I feel so emotional about. Hope I didn't get too emotional, thank you.
Thank you, Sandra.
At this time, are there any other cards that need to be turned in before we close public comment? All right, seeing none, public comment is hereby closed. At this time, we will, are there any questions of staff?
Since there were a lot of questions about the traffic, since the traffic engineering firm is here, could maybe you give us a little bit of feedback on your study and how you
Yes, I'm Paul Guzuk with Lee Engineering, and we were requested, we did our initial traffic.
Move the mic just up a little bit.
We did our initial traffic study back in 2015, and then we were requested again to count the intersection of Prescott Country Club and Manzanita in the peak season, which had been identified as January 2016. I'm sorry.
Please, no comments from the audience.
And so back in January 2016, we placed a video camera at the intersection, and we counted 24-hour intersection turning movement counts at the intersection. There, we found the peak hours, the AM and the PM peak hours, and 24-hour volumes approaching the intersection. There, I want to, with that, we do a level-of-service analysis of the intersection, and the level of service is based on delay of the approaches. And during the AM and PM, which are typically the peak times of the traffic, the operation was shown to operate a level service A or level service B, depending on the approach, which A and B are very good operating levels. With the development of Parcel B and C, I know the volumes and the number of units have changed, and to determine the number of trips that are going to be generated by those locations, we would use the trip, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, they have a trip generation handbook throughout the country, and that's typically the forum that everybody has accepted in the engineering field. And I want to say, with Parcel B, we looked at the development of 44 multifamily homes, and in the peak hour, that's going to generate less, I'm going to say, less than 30 peak hour trips. So there's going to be less than one vehicle, about one vehicle every 30 seconds. That's what that Parcel B will add to Manzanita. And then with Location C, I want to say with 38 trips, and again, if everybody was going to circulate through Manzanita Trail, that would also generate, you know, less than 30 vehicles in the peak hour. So overall, there's going to be less than one minute, I'm sorry, one vehicle, minute more. And if all those vehicles were to come at the intersection, we analyze the operation of the four-way stop, we still get a level service A or level service B for all the approach movements.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Gary.
Okay, Gary. Okay, thank you. My question is, my concern is the streets. Now, Richard, I don't know how that would work, if the streets are that narrow, do you base it on the width of the street or the, in other words, the traffic, if it's a tight squeeze, which it sounds like it, is there a problem there that was going to create your, in other words, your study, would that affect your study?
That would not affect our study, no.
Okay, it's on you, no, thank you.
I have a question. Was Turquoise studied at all with the traffic study?
Turquoise, no, it was not.
No, it was not? So the exit going through, out to Turquoise on the other signal on the country club?
No, it was not.
Very quickly, a lot of concern about the narrowing, the narrow streets. Was that taken into consideration also, or did I miss that?
Again, no, no, it was not.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Any other questions? This is our time to ask any questions of the applicant and/or staff.
The streets in the country club were originally developed as private streets, and in about 1983, an improvement district was undertaken by Yavapai County with the residents of the country club, and the streets in the country club were brought to county standards and are now maintained by Yavapai County. So they meet a public road standard. Whether they be narrow or not, they meet a county road standard, and they were improved as part of an improvement district. I think that improvement district was paid off a couple of years back, but it was done with public funds to bring those roads to then-current county standards, so as to be continually maintained by Yavapai County.
Richard, the access road coming in off Buena Vista into Parcel B, would that be, what status of that road would that?
Because the road doesn't provide for regional circulation, it would be my recommendation to the town council that it be a private road, and there are stipulations recommended by the fire marshal as it relates to width, as well as no parking if they are minimum widths. However, as I think Mr. Burgoye's pointed out, the fire district has on-record comments, and they are not concerned about the singular access because in the interior, you have ample room to turn around, and there would be additional shoulder work necessary if need be to push a car off into the country club so as to get by on that 600 feet of cul-de-sac, so to speak.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Roberts?
He answered my question.
Any other questions of the applicant or staff from the commission?
I have just one, who commissioned the study?
Who paid for it? The applicant paid for it. The process that is undertaken in the town is, a scope of work is submitted to the town by the registered professional to determine the scope of their work, what they're going to undertake, the assumptions that they're going to put into the study before it's approved. That scope of work was reviewed by the Town of Prescott Valley professional staff, ADOT, as well as Yavapai County. That scope of services, once it was approved, was implemented by the registered professional traffic engineer, or you heard remarks about the civil engineer, same process. It's necessary to come up with a scope of work that we agree to, the assumptions that goes into that, and then on that basis, there's reliance on the outcome or recommendations of that study. But that process was undertaken for both studies that were done by registered professional engineers.
Thank you, Richard.
Commissioner Roberts?
Okay, I was reading the material that was sent to us by the directors, your office, and plus the testimonies, questions were asked at a neighborhood meeting. One of the, number one, I found in the people I read, flood control was above traffic. And I was wondering, what about the flood control? Is that going to be pretty solid? And when's the last time they did a study on the flood control?
Well, the flood control issues, meaning conveying water through the country club, was something that was a regional issue, as evidenced by the fact that the flood control district has elected to commission a regional study to determine how water flows there to be able to get it to where it wants to go without flooding people's houses. The actual site drainage characteristics were analyzed by a registered professional engineer, I think it was Lyon Engineering, and they reviewed the circumstances for the parcel to show where the water would go, would water be created from post-development flows, and where those flows would be either detained or would be directed ultimately to clipper wash or where they're ultimately heading to, and that would be the Alafry River. The onsite drainage, the preliminary study was done by Lyon and was commissioned by the property owners. The study done by the flood control district was commissioned by the Yavapai County Flood Control District Board of Directors, and they set about to approve the scope of services and then direct the outcome of that study. Also, then, the improvements that have taken place have been done by the flood control district tax dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, Richard, just to refresh my memory, what is the maximum height of a building here? Is it 30 or 35?
Residential heights in the Town of Prescott Valley can't exceed 35 feet, and that's to the mean height of the roof, that's not to the peak. We have other areas, albeit commercial, I would refer to the hospital, which the maximum height of that facility because of fire flows is a little over 110 feet. This building's about 60 feet in height.
Thank you.
At this time, would the applicant like to say anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just trying to, I'm just trying to keep track of the questions and comments, and not that hopefully I got most of them, if not all of them. And I'm glad you asked Paul Guzic to come up and talk about traffic. A couple of things came up. One was about views. And the views, as you see from most of the country club, will not change. However, like I was saying earlier, the fairway views, if you're playing golf, or if you're across from the, across from where the homes will be built, yeah, there'll be some view changes. But again, trying to keep that height down, keep it within the context of existing homes on the, on the golf course was a major goal of the, of the planning. An important thing to point out is that the fairways will still be there. The Ts and the Greens will still be there. The major asset to the homes is still there. The golf course is not going away. It's not changing as a result of this. So that's, that's important. Somebody brought up safety, or a couple of mentions were made, or comments were made about safety. Golf course community has golf balls. And some of, some of us are much better golfers than I, I know. And we want to keep our, you know, we want to keep golf balls on the fairway, or at least in the rough. But when you buy a home on a golf course, there's some intrinsic acceptance of the implication of golf balls being there. Now, does that say, well, you cast a blind eye to that? No. You certainly want to design things in a way that are, keep them as safe as possible. Is it going to eliminate all the possibilities of golf balls coming into homes or into backyards? No. But it's part of, it's part of owning property along a golf course. I've had good, good fortune to work with many, many golf course architects on many golf course properties. And it's, it's a codicil that goes in with the purchase of a, purchase of a home or property along golf course. The other things, there was comments about drainage, drainage and some of the more detailed design. At this level, are all the details worked out? No, they aren't. And it's not appropriate necessarily at this level to work out all those details. But as we go through the process, if we go through the process, final development plan and on to building permits, then certainly a lot of detailed work has to go into this. So it's by no means complete at this point. There's a lot of work to be done as you go through the process, and that's, that's the nature of doing these things, in a stepwise process from a big picture down to details. Let's see. And there was a comment about the 75 homes in area C as per the prior, the prior approval, or the 1983 county approval. And those, and I think the comment was that those would be one-story homes. Well, it said one story along the north boundary line of that property. Now, why the, why the county did that at the time, I don't know. You know, it's 35 years ago. None of us know. But it was along that north boundary line, that they were to be one-story homes. The comment, I think, about emergency access, emergency vehicles, I think Mr. Parker addressed it about CYFD and their comments of being able to access this. And they did put conditions on, on the, on the buildings as well as the site to make sure that they could provide adequate access for, for emergencies. And not only on just the access, but like I say, the building design itself. So with that, I'm going to ask Jeff, or Jessica, if there's any comments they want to make?
Any questions of the commission for the applicant?
No?
Not at this time.
Okay, not at this time, thank you. This time, I'm going to bring it back to the commission for any comments or additional questions before we, before I ask for a motion. Anyone have anything to say or ask any other questions? Mr. Duski?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I find myself very, I don't want to say confused, but conflicted, I guess. The 83 Planning Commission from the county made two stipulations. One, that the area B, parcel B, would be retained as open space. And the other is that the units to be built in area C, as was just discussed, the units facing north were to be one story. In October 17th, the Board of Supervisors of the Yavapai County reinforced the open space issue relative to area B. They also made the provision to drop to 15 units that had been previously approved by the Planning Commission. And to incorporate the concept into the, what we now refer to as the 75 units in area They did not address at that time the fact that the units to the north should be one story. However, they stipulated that all the provisions of the Planning and Zoning Commission at that time were to be retained, which in my opinion would indicate that the one-story provision would be retained, as well as the open space provision. In December of 2013, the Director of Planning for Prescott Valley, in an effort to ensure that the transfer of the properties within the country club were transferred zoning-wise into the annexation process properly, wrote a letter to Mr. Mauch, his counterpart in the county. And in that letter, he addressed the issue of area B as being retained as open space and asked if Director Mauch agreed. He responded that he did agree that it would be open space. Now, the county doesn't have an open space code, as I understand it. So R1L is the appropriate code, as is the rest of that golf course and all the golf courses that I know of around the area. As a result, it does say R1L says R1, single-family. And it doesn't stipulate the open space. When it was brought in under the annexation, the open space issue either was not addressed or an OS designation was not applied, or maybe couldn't be applied. I'm not sure exactly how that would work. Not being an attorney, I'm not that privy to the annexation issues. But everything I see tells me that this plan that's being proposed is not what the intent of everything is. And that there are so many issues that are in conflict either with itself, or with others, or with other things, that I find myself in this conflict. I also, in regard to the planned development, a preliminary development plan, find it to be very lacking compared to others that we normally see submitted. It's all just pie in the sky. And it has to be because there is no developer. So they don't know what they're going to build, and they don't know how they're going to build it. It's all conceptual. So if we approve the planned development, a preliminary development plan as a Planning and Zoning Commission in Prescott Valley, we will never see this again because it will go directly to the town council. So tonight is our shot at determining whether we're willing to accept what I consider to be inadequate information on the preliminary development plan because of it being all just conceptual. And are we willing to accept the fact that this is not intended to be open space as it, I believe, truly is intended to be because of some technicality? And are we willing to put the residents of the country club into the position they find themselves in because of this application? I don't find there's enough substantiation for the application. And I find myself in a position that my vote will be negative. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commissioners? No? Any further comments from staff or the applicant? All right, seeing none, we will proceed. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion for the general plan amendment, general plan amendment 14-006. Do I have a motion?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve GPA 14-006, forward it on to the council for approval.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other comments? Any further comment? Seeing none, Kristi, would you call for the vote?
Commissioner Drives?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Duski?
No.
Commissioner Yeater?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
Chairperson Searcher?
At this time, we also need to entertain a motion for zoning map change 14-006. Do we have a motion?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve ZMC 14-006.
I'll second.
Okay, and we're forwarding to the town council for approval. Just want to make, make sure we're clear on that. It's been moved and seconded. Any other comment?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, may I address a question to staff?
Absolutely.
Richard, is it possible that an amendment to the motion could be made, or a motion could be made overriding, to amend the zoning map change to provide for an OS condition in that area B? Could a motion from this commission do that?
The item before you would have to be re-advertised, reposted, and a new public hearing would be associated with the commission's initiative to rezone a piece of property from R1L PAD to open space. So it would not be a suitable addition to, or an amendment to a motion this evening. If that were to be the case, the commission should table it, direct staff through their initiative to bring a formal hearing in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission to consider a zoning map change from R1L PAD to an open space designation.
Thank you.
Well, we have a motion on the table. It's been moved and seconded. Any other comments? Kristi, would you call for the vote?
Chairperson Roberts?
Yes.
Chairperson Duski?
No.
Chairperson Yeater, or Commissioner Yeater?
Yes.
Commissioner Drives?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
Chairperson Searcher?
Yes. At this time in our agenda, we're going to move on to item number eight, action items, PDP 14-004. Upon the application of Jeff and Jessica Hall, owner's consideration of a preliminary development plan illustrating 40 townhomes with associated drives, parking, landscaping, and open space of 4.1 acres, parcel generally known as parcel B or the triangle area. Subject property is located between the first eighth and ninth fairways within the Prescott Country Club golf course. Also, we, I'll have Richard go ahead and just present as well, PDP 14-005. Upon the application of Jeff and Jessica Hall, owner's consideration of a preliminary development plan illustrating 35 townhomes on 3.98 acres in the existing R2 PAD multifamily residential planned area development zoning district. Subject property generally located west of the Prescott Country Club, driving range between the third green and 11th tee adjacent to Clipper Wash and a terminus of Cottonwood Springs Road in the Prescott Country Club. Richard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Again, you're looking at a preliminary development plan, and I would submit to Commissioner Duski that it is conceptual. With that in mind, it does illustrate the configuration of what will be townhouse configured multiple-family development on this property.
Hold on, Richard. Please take all comments out of the auditorium, please. Thank you.
As we've discussed, there have been technical submittals. They're preliminary in nature. To address Commissioner Duski's concern, I have seen instances where the Planning and Zoning Commission is consulted by the town council to review first by the Planning and Zoning Commission, any subsequent final development plan that comes forward. Given Rick's concern, I think that that may be something worthwhile to put together a stipulation. I'd certainly assist in that regard. That approval be subject to review and approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission of any subsequent final development plan prior to consideration by the town council. And I would support that kind of, of motion, given the concerns that have been expressed. This has been a difficult process. I certainly believe that there has been a good faith effort put forth by the property owners to be able to render visible these units to the best of their ability. To Commissioner Duski's point, he's right. I don't believe that there is a eminent developer that is intended to develop this, this product or these units. I have had conversation with a couple of developers that have told me that this kind of product is currently selling very well in the current real estate market. So with that said, with the recommendation that if you move to approve per town code the preliminary development plans, that you attach an additional stipulation that the final development plans be reviewed and considered with a recommendation to council prior to formal consideration by the town council. With that, I'd respond to any questions you have regarding either preliminary development plan for parcel B here illustrated, or parcel C known as Clipper Village.
Any questions?
For that, that motion, would that be attached to the conditions that, the action plan?
Yes, and I would include that condition such as review and approval of a subsequent final development plan by the Planning and Zoning Commission prior to consideration by the town council. And I think that that'll get to the detail that is being sought by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Any other questions of staff? All right, seeing none, because it's an action item, the applicant does have the opportunity to come back up and, if there's any questions of the applicant? None?
No.
Okay. All right, so I will entertain a motion for PDP 14-00- All right, so I will entertain a motion for PDP 14-004.
I'll make the motion to approve PDP 14-004 with the condition of submittal and approval of a final development plan to be approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission prior to going to the Town Council.
And I'll second that.
Comments? Okay, seeing none, Kristi?
Commissioner Drives?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Dusky?
Yes.
Commissioner Yater?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
Chairperson Searcher?
So at this time, I'll also entertain a motion for PDP 14-005.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve PDP 14-005, and we want this any considerations for come back to us, correct? Then it is brought back to us for final development plan.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further comments? Kristi?
Commissioner Yater?
Yes.
Commissioner Dusky?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Drives?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
Chairperson Searcher?
Yes.
Before we get into public hearing, does anyone need a five-minute break, bathroom break? All right, we will be taking a five-minute bathroom break and then reconvening to hear our next public hearing item. Now that all Commissioners are present, so next up on the agenda is item number nine, a public hearing item, zoning map change 17-002. Upon the application of Winsong Assisted Living Agent, a public hearing to consider a zoning map change from C1 PAD, Commercial Neighborhood Sales and Services Planned Area Development, to RSPAD, Residential and Services Planned Area Development on approximately 4.78 acres located on the west side of Winsong Drive, approximately 900 feet south of Lake Shore Drive.
Chairman Commissioners, I would ask that the complete report staff brief be entered in the minutes, and I'm going to summarize some of that for you. And also, the presentation was provided to you, the applicant's presentation on the facility is provided to you, so may not need to repeat that if you don't want to. Again, the subject property is a portion, approximately 29 acres, that was zoned to C1 PAD along with a preliminary development plan in 2007 for the development of approximately 166,000 square feet of office and retail uses. Proposed development has not gone forward, and the property owners, working with Winsong Senior Living, now wish to rezone the subject of 4.78 acres to RSPAD. The preliminary development plan for the remainder of the 29 acres will stay in force unless it's amended, later amended through the Planning and Zoning Commission. The site is immediately north of the existing Samaritan Care Facility. The R zoning is in conformance with the mixed-use, limited retail district designation of the Prescott Valley Town Center Plan, intended for mixed residential offices and retail uses. The very detailed preliminary development plan outlines the bulk and location of proposed structures for the Winsong community. And as usual, a final development plan in conformance of all town standards will be approved by the Town Council prior to development. Off-site improvements will include full half-street improvements to the ultimate cross-section of Winsong Drive as exist at the intersection at Florentine Road. Drainage will be consistent with a Section 14 regional drainage plan. Neighborhood meeting was held July 21, 2017. Reported the two people attended, and there was no objection to the proposed rezoning. Staff observes the requested RSPAD zoning is in conformance with the general plan 2025, and the preliminary development plan is appropriate per town code standards. Staff asks that each item be acted on by separate motion to approve, along with the included condition. And I'm available for any comments, and a representative of the Winsong Senior Living is also available. Any questions?
Any questions of the commission, staff?
I guess the question would be to you, sir. I'm assuming that you're the representative, since you're the last one in the House.
Real quick, though, any questions for staff before we get to the applicant?
Oh, for staff, I'm sorry, yeah.
None? Okay. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Jeff Fleischer, and my company is Novo Senior Living Properties.
Thank you.
What's your timeframe on this particular property?
We'd like to break ground right after the hearing, the second hearing, early October.
And the completion of the project?
Westpac, our general contractor, is projecting a 12-and-a-half-month build, and so Halloween of 2018.
Any other questions of the applicant?
I'd like to make a comment.
Sure.
If I may, Mr. Chairman. Contrary to my comments for our previous long engagement here tonight, this is one of the finest presentations I've seen in my, going on 10 years on this Planning and Zoning Commission, and I wanted to compliment you on that presentation. It makes our job a lot easier. And it certainly explains what your intent is, who you are, and how you're going to go about things, and I personally appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And Jeff, thank you for sticking with us this evening. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
At this time, because it is a public hearing, I would open the floor to public comments. Is there anybody from the public wishing to comment? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing portion, and I'll bring it back to the commission for either additional comments or a motion for ZMC 17-002.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve ZMC 17-002 with conditions.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Who was it? It was a tie, I think.
It doesn't matter.
Okay, we'll give that one to Rick. All right. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Call for the vote?
Commissioner Yater?
Yes.
Commissioner Dusky?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Drives?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
Chairperson Searcher?
Yes.
Moving on to item number 10, action items. It's PDP 17-008. Upon the application of Winsong Assisted Living Agent, consideration of a preliminary development plan for development of an assisted living and memory care community comprising of 92 living units on approximately 4.7 acres located on the west side of Winsong Drive, approximately 900 feet south of Lake Shore Drive. At this time, since we've already heard the presentation during the public hearing, does the commission have any other comments or questions?
No.
No.
All right, seeing none, then, I would entertain a motion for PDP 17-008.
So moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, call for the vote, Kristi. Thank you.
Commissioner Drives?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Dusky?
Yes.
Commissioner Yater?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
Chairperson Searcher?
Yes.
Mr. Vice Chair, do you want me to read the call to public, or would you like to? It's all right. I can do it. I have it right here.
Consideration and discussion of comments from the public. Those wishing to address the Planning and Zoning Commission need not request permission in advance. Action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date. No comments?
All right, seeing none, that closes the call to public. Item number 12 adjournment, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.